Thank you, Wes.
Yep.
All right, good evening, welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Work Session for Monday, March 18th, 6:00 PM in the VHS library. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Haverhill.
Here.
Mrs. Dennis.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Steph.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
All members present?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag is right up there.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, public participation. The public participation section of the Board of Education's agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, ideas, or questions. Board, welcome to your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding an issue, the board would remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful of the rights of others. And second, before coming to the board with an issue, you should have first addressed it with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. This meeting of the Board of Education in public is for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. Anyone like to speak? Nope? Okay. Item five is our work session to discuss, since the purpose of this meeting, to discuss district facilities.
How should we kick off? You have a lot of papers in front of you, so let's just kind of go through and just make sure you know what you have, and we can refer to them later. But you have five-year forecast, which Justin is going to talk about first, just to kind of put everything in the financial context. And then you have our policy on the general fund cash balance, which also Justin will be talking about. You have the list, really you have the emails. Is this all the emails? Yeah, all the emails. All the emails that your pastment sent that Justin has sent out, financial information related to this topic. This one's a really important one. Justin put this together today, the one with the black bar and the highlighting. This is sort of a, just a estimate of what it might cost in terms of borrowing money to cover the things that we need to do. So Justin will talk about that, and it's hopefully pretty accurate based on what we know right now, okay? So that's what those documents are. This document, which is the, looks like the spreadsheet with the highlighting, that is our current, that's a list of the things that need to be done, that has to be done, that we have compiled over the last two years, okay? There were lots of other things on here that we've done. We've spent a couple of million dollars doing things in terms of updating facilities and repairing things and changing things. So I took those all off, and I just left what has to be done. So if you look on both sides, you've got the schools on one side, and then you have the bus garage, the maintenance department, and the athletic department on the other side, okay? And some of those things, we'll talk about this later, but some of those things are not necessarily facilities, but they're large cost items that are going to have to be addressed, okay? So that's what that is. And then this other sheet, it says the VHS renovations, I'll talk about that at the end here. So that's, that's what you have in front of you, just so we're not playing paper shuffle or confused about what document or what.
Right.
All right. So everybody can grab the five-year forecast, it's like this, it's already here. Just to, just to go over again from where we were in November, this year, line 2.080, we're anticipating to bring in 25.587 million, and we're estimating to spend 27.170. So this year, we're looking like we're going to overspend by 1.5 million, deficit spending by 1.5 million. Looking at line six and draw across, we're always about 1.5 million deficit spending. I will caveat, though, in 2027 and 2028, those numbers look a lot larger because it does not include the renewal levy that we have down on number 11. So right at the very bottom here, that's where the renewal comes in at the bottom. So that 2.1 million and 4.2 million would be there to offset those deficit numbers up top. So one of the things is just really, you know, we're roughly 66% of the way through the school year, through the fiscal school year. How accurate is the November forecast currently? You know, how's that trending? On the second page here, I put the numbers from our forecast where we are like as of today. So there's a payroll in there, it's not exactly, you know, a 66% split, but it gives you the dollar difference and the percent difference. So going on top there, the revenue is everything in green. We're still anticipating 1.4 million from our property tax collection. So each year during our organizational meeting, I'll ask the board permission to send out a tax advance to go from Rainy County. What they do is instead of waiting until March to pay us, they'll start giving us advances in February. And so, you know, we're 89.3% of the way through the budget for the general taxes. Tangent personal property tax, we haven't received any advance yet for that. So that's the split typically. We see 53%, 47%, 53% in the first half, 47% in the second half, that's why we're trending there. I anticipate us to bring in that additional 53.5% to bring that to 100%. Unrestricted grants aid, that's the state funding, we're at 71%. Right now, like I said, through February, we're at 66%, but if you go halfway through March, we're kind of right around 70% of the way through. So our revenue's trending in the right direction there. Restricted grants aid, we're a little bit higher. Local share of property taxes, that's usually a 50-50 split, first half and second half, so we're right in part there. All other operating revenue, that's going to be our interest, that's going to be money for catastrophic cost, excess cost, all those things. But in total, we're 75.5% of our way through our budget, which is good, you know, we have those advances. We're trending pretty close to what we forecasted in November. And on the blue side, that's all of our expenditures. So personal services, that's going to be salaries, we're 67% of the way through budget. We're slightly lower than the 70% that we're through right now, but we do have spring supplementals that'll hit, so the June paychecks are usually a little bit larger than normal. Employees retirement insurance, that one's actually a little bit higher than it should be. I'll probably have to bump that up in the May forecast. That, right now, I put a 12% increase from the previous year in there, and we've exceeded that. So what that means is last year, I would say November, I was anticipating a premium holiday and you didn't get it, and that's why it's showing there. We didn't see the premium holiday issue. Everything else.
You guys understand that because we didn't meet a metric, or is that just because they just didn't award one?
They didn't award one. What they do is they base all that on how much cash Lurk has on hand, and if there's certain metrics, if they're above a certain metric, they have to give one, and if they're below a certain metric, they can't give one. And if we're in between those two, they look at our advisors and say, what do you guys recommend? How are we trending? What is our runoff?
So it's nothing we had any control over?
Nothing to know. That's right. Our people did what they were supposed to do, which is make, which make this really hard, because you tell them, if you do this, you get premium holiday, then they do it, and you don't get one.
But I know a couple of years ago, we had to twist a lot of arms to, right?
We still have to twist them, yeah. Yeah, there's more than just the employees' participation, too. There's a bunch of other things that Dave and I have to do to hit those metrics. We've done all those things. It's just a matter of, right now, with where we're at in the year, the advice from the third-party administrators saying, we're right on the line there, don't do it, we'll put in the increase for next year, and then hopefully next year, we're trending in the right direction now, we can take it next year. So that's what $300,000 hit. And that's the district, so.
Not getting the holiday?
Right. Because that's our share of the premium for the health insurance. And then the individual employee loses about $400 if they're on family plan, and about 150 if they're individual. So everybody is losing on the deal. Their argument is, well, it just means you guys didn't overpay us. It's kind of your taxes, right? You're not getting the big refund because you didn't give us too much money, right? That's fine, and I told him this, I said, if you want to operate that way, that's fine. You can't then tell people that this isn't incentive, because an incentive means you get it every time you do what you're supposed to do, and now you're not doing that. So, yeah, Justin and I don't agree with the way they operate, but that's another for me. It is. Everything else needs to be trending. If you go to the very bottom there, our total expenditures, again, we're halfway through March, so again, we're right around 70%, and we're right at 70% of our budget as well. So from a five-year forecast accuracy standpoint, the November forecast is pretty accurate. I'm sure it's got some tweaks here and there, but the numbers that we have in there are pretty good. Those numbers are the basis then, three-year, two, three, four, and five moving forward, which we'll be looking at going forward here. So that's the forecast. One thing I want to draw attention to is back to the first page here. What we're doing, if you go down to line 12, it says fund balance, June 30th for certificate of obligations. You know, we're at 15.5 millions when we start the year, I should say, ending the year. And then, as you can see, those deficit spending up top translate down below, and so we're anticipated to be at 9.5, 9.6 million in 2028.
As far as?
As far as total cash goes.
That we have.
Yep. So we started the year with 17, and then we're trending on a downward trajectory, assuming everything stays exactly as it is right now. We're just increasing everybody one year, we're assuming nobody's leaving, we're assuming, you know, it's hard to project at five years now. This is just simply a trend. As far as salaries will do, as far as what benefits will do, as far as what the biennial budget's going to do, because there's two of them in there, as far as what updates go for the triennial update, and there's a lot of things here. The further out this forecast gets, the trick here it is to kind of pinpoint where exactly we'll be. And the reason I brought forth the policy, the cash balance policy, what it essentially says is, once our cash hits 35% of our operating expenditures, the treasurer needs to notify the board that they need to start considering reducing expenditures, requesting additional levies, additional monies, or a combination of both. And then once that number gets to 25%, it puts the, on this on the board, the board has to take action on one of those three items. And so right now, in 2028, we're right around 30% with that number. And again, it's just a safety valve, so to speak, so that our cash doesn't get below a point that we feel comfortable with, and it buys us a pot. Justin, let's talk about why we are stepping more. Right, so, main reason for being here, I mean, some of the things that are outside of our control, many schools have what's called a permanent improvement levy, or a bond levy, but they have some sort of funds that are dedicated to maintaining and upgrading their facilities. We don't have any of that. So anytime we need to buy a bus, anytime we need to fix a roof, anytime we need to fix concrete, it's coming out of our general fund. We don't have to set aside revenue stream for that. And so everything that we see is on here. So other school districts that do have a permanent improvement, or a bond levy, you know, anything else really, it's outside of this forecast. So all those, all those things that they're doing behind the scenes to keep up with their facilities, you're not seeing them necessarily on the expenditure side of your forecast. But because of the way we operate, they are, they're all showing up here. Not to mention, we also have in there, if you look on our expenditure tab here, right above, it's kind of the middle of the page, intergovernmental and debt service, $1.1 million, that's principal and interest on elementary school, fieldhouse, and all the upgrades we did almost 10 years ago. So historically, that's where a bond would come. That money would be off of our forecast, that would be taken care of by a bond, and then our expenditures would be out of that. The bond being, it would have been quoted, if the voters would have agreed to pay for that bond. Right now, they're not, the district took it out on its own, so it's being paid out of the cash balance, or out of the general fund. See what I'm saying? Yeah. Yeah, so right now in this forecast, we have $862,000 in capital outlay over the next five years. We're using general fund money to infuse the district, but obviously, as we get further along, we'll need a lot more to keep up with some of this stuff. And our current debt that we have right now with our cop scam, it's 12.75 million, that's the principal.
Yes, permanent improvement levy, that's something that most districts in Ohio have.
All but 52.
So we're one of the few that not have one.
We're 610 school districts. Right, so permanent improvement levy, we are, 518 out of 611 schools have a permanent levy. And then if you couple that with a bond levy, 432 schools out of 611 schools have a bond levy. And so if you take how many schools have a bond and/or a PI levy, all but 57 schools in Ohio, we're one of those 57 schools that operates solely on our general fund. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands the current situation that we're in, and again, it's just, we are going to be in the next four or five years deficit spending, and again, it's because we do have a lot of large capital projects, and we do not have additional money to pay for those other than our general fund. And are all the things that we're going to talk about tonight that we absolutely have to do, is it building on this? No. So that was the point of this, too. So we have $862,000 budgeted out of the current needs that we'll share in the future here, as far as a roof goes and everything else, we'll get into that. So whatever we add without additional funding, it's just going to make that 9.58 million go further down. Well, and if you look at the cash balance five years out on 7020, it's down to $3.4 million, right? That's without doing any of the things that we're going to talk about, okay? So the cash balance is being eaten away by our annual deficit that's occurring, okay? So in that, that we, good to go on the next? Yeah, so that's 3.4.
That's assuming no renewal on the current, on the existing.
That's right, that's right. So we'll be going up to 27 for the renewal, for our 26 for the renewal for the 4.25 million emergency levy.
Is that, what's the difference between 0.010 and 0.020?
July 1, so ending and beginning cash balance.
Oh, got it, okay. So that's the end of the year, 2028? Okay, got it.
And, you know, we should be able to assume that that, we would renew that levy. The question is, what are we going to do in the meantime that could affect that?
Ideal time to do it.
Right, right, right.
So the emergency levy renewed when?
That one is in 2026, I believe, this is when we'll go back out. 2021, I think, is when it was last renewed.
So 27 and 28, the numbers we're seeing right now are saying that that would not renew.
Yeah, you can't write that in there, because you can't assume it's $100,000. Yeah, different line, it's been different things. So line seven is without that renewal, and then line, line 10, I'm sorry, line 12 is with the renewal.
It's with the renewal?
Yep.
Okay, end of year.
Yep.
So it would be comparing like the 3.4 to the 9.5, essentially, right? This is without, this is with, end of year?
What it's essentially doing is, if you go, see where it says 2.1 and 4.25 right there? Alls it's doing for line 12 is taking line seven and adding, I'm sorry, line seven and adding those two together. So without the levy, we'd end with 9.1 million. We'd start 2028 with 9.1, and we'd end with 3.4 million.
Okay.
And then if you go down to line 20, I'm sorry, line 12, that's the renewal. So you're going to get the first half of it, that's your 2.1, and then the second is the full year collection, 4.2. You're adding those two back together to get your line 12.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so what you have, so let's look at this spreadsheet. This is the sheet that we compiled, where we compiled the things that absolutely need to get done in each building and on the campus as a whole. So you can see the list, they don't want to read all those things to you, we talked about some of them before, but they're things that, they're not optional, they're things that have to get done. So like if you look at the high school, just for example, the lights in the auditorium, both sets of lights, house lights and stage lights, both need to be replaced. They're ancient, basically, and we've talked, we looked at having them repaired and all that, and they're just saying, it's not, you can't do it, you need to get new ones. We talked about the science wing renovations, we know that's something that needs to be done. It's, I mean, the example I give people is, in some of our roofs, if you plug in two microscopes on the same wall, it kicks the breaker off, you can't even run two microscopes, the electric power's not there. And then we just don't have science labs, and we have one, basically one science lab that we have to share, everyone has to share, and that's just not, that's just not adequate. You always have to look at paving, and paving is always really expensive, so that's going to have to happen here in a few years. At least they aware, what they call a wearing course, so it doesn't have to be all, you know, ground all the way down, start from scratch, but it's going to be resurfaced, basically. There are sidewalks around the building, we just, just last month, the health inspector came, and he flagged all the areas, and I don't know why, just last month, but because he's been this way for a long time, but all the areas of concrete where the concrete's uneven, we had to go around and paint, the maintenance people had to go around and paint that, it's a trip hazard. So when we replaced these main entrances here, those, if you remember, those were all trip, I mean, there's trip hazards, all, in fact, I watched the lady almost fall in her face, and they were really bad. So those have to be, we've painted them now, because that's what we're required to do, but those sidewalks need to be replaced. HVAC units, I think John talked to you guys about those before when we were meeting with the architect at one point, those have to be replaced here, five of those are $30,000 a piece. We just got the estimate on the roof, which is almost $4 million. Stage curtains did not pass inspection because they're not, they're no longer fireproof, they have to be fireproof, so those have to be replaced. And the water main to this building is ancient, and it's springing leaks all the time, and that's going to have to be replaced. So just the high school alone, you're looking at $6 million, almost $7 million. The elementary is the least, of course, because it's a newer building, we do have some significant problems there. One of them is those big windows in the upper part of the building, they've been leaking from day one, and no one can seem to figure out why they're leaking, or how to fix it, and no one even wants to deal with it. And so we would have to, basically, the architects are saying, in order to solve this problem, we have to replace it with this. They've actually moved from their original positions.
Isn't that going to happen again?
Well, no, we would have it done correctly this time, apparently they were done incorrectly.
So it's bad, it's nothing with settling of the building or anything?
It seems to be installation.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it seems. The building does have some settling, but most, any of the windows that we get that shatter on their own, that's typically from settling, and we have had a couple of those, but what we have here are leaks that have happened from the, when they first put them in.
I remember, yeah.
And then some of the panes have actually slid in the track, so we had a half-inch gap on one of them that we had to, they put suction cups on, moved it back over, and blocked it out again. But that shouldn't have happened, and that's not from settling, that's just from not putting the stops in where they were supposed to be in at the time, so.
That's not anything great, we'll be going back.
I, that lady, I wanted to.
At this point.
So many years gone, you know, we can talk to our attorney about it, it's just.
I feel like we've talked about this before.
And here's what you get into, so I've done this before, so when I, when we built a high school in Lake Valley, the roof leaked everywhere, I mean, everywhere. And this is like 150,000 square foot building, huge high school. And so we, I got ahold of the architect, and they got ahold of the contractors, and what we found out was that, first of all, the general contractor did not want to deal with it, he said, well, that's the subcontractor's fault. So you get into this, you know, back and forth, and what we ended up finding out was the contractor actually forged the warranty, because they didn't know, they knew that they didn't put the roof on correctly, so they didn't bring the manufacturer out to do the inspection and get the warranty, so they actually forged the warranty, and then they went out of business. You couldn't find them, you know? So that's what, you start going down this rabbit hole, and we've spent a lot of money on attorneys trying to get down the rabbit hole.
Yeah.
So it's probably better to just cut our losses and deal with the problem.
Okay.
In some of these structures, we're going to get return investment, like the lighting's to be more efficient, I don't know, save electricity.
That's right, that's right, Mark, some of it will make the building more efficient, yes. So that's, you know, the elementary, the sidewalks around the building, they've got the same issues, because we talked about this before, they weren't poured correctly, so that's something that's going to have to be dealt with. Again, there'll be paving there at that building as well in the next few years. Saterway has got a number of issues. The elevator is a big one, has to be replaced, that's not really optional either. There's concrete at the site, like all of them have to be replaced. There's the music room needs soundproofing. I don't know if you guys have been in the music room? Yeah, it was, they put carpet on the walls, and I think that was, tried to do the sound dampening, but it looks, it looks hideous, so we've got to get that fixed. You know, there's a water main there that has to be replaced, and that's $35,000. So you can see, you know, if you're looking just at the schools, we're looking at about $8 million of work, a little bit, almost $9 million of work that needs to be done, right? Just in the schools. Those are not optional. And if you flip this over, their side.
But for those, Dave, I mean, that's, like you're talking, these have to be done like within a certain time, or are we going to stagger them over the next?
These are things that, yeah, I mean, we'll take, we'll stagger them as much as we can, but we're talking within, between now and five years.
Okay. Completed.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if it's like within the next, you know, 24 months, this is all going to be.
No, 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 no. This is just to tell you, these things absolutely have to be done.
Okay.
And this is the cost of them, and they will be, they have to be done in the next few years. Like the roof, they're telling us the roof is just a couple more years.
Okay. So you'll go through these things and prioritize at each school?
Well, that's what we've done, that's what we've done, yeah. Because there's a lot of other things.
Like what you're going to start with, and?
Yeah, there's a lot of other things that could be on this list, these are the priorities. Yeah.
Do what you're saying, Charlie, your stand is lighting the most critical issue in that high school, right? Essentially, we're asking.
Right.
Can you guys prioritize?
Well, so lighting is, we'll talk about that in another, I got another thing that will, so, these are the things that absolutely have to be done, and will be done in the next few years.
In no particular order.
Right, I mean, they just have to be done.
For sure.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're.
They're all number one.
Yeah, right, right. We've taken out the ones that are, that would be optional, that we can take, move down the list, okay? We flip it over, there's the bus garage. Bus garage, I mean, I don't know how many you've been to the bus garage, but it is really, it needs to be bulldozed, honestly. It needs to be replaced. And we're on here is just things, you know, to try to fix it and keep it going as it is. Really, I forget what the number was for the architects, but it was only about a half a million dollars to replace it. So we would be getting close here to just saying we need to.
The whole garage?
Yes, yes.
At the existing location?
Site, yeah, because we don't have another site, so we have to use that location, which is not ideal, but, you know, we tried to buy that property across the street, they want $85,000 an acre, an option.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So that, you know, we would have to, right now, we'd have to use that site. But it would be cheaper, honestly, to rebuild, to rebuild it than to do any of this stuff right here, okay? So that's, I would say that's what we're going to have to look at doing there. We put in here also, because they're just enormous cost, we need two new buses, and they're $150,000 a piece. Our vans are completely rusted out, so we need a couple more of those vans. The vans are helpful if you only have to take five or six kids somewhere. And if, for example, if we have five or six kids competing in the speech and debate, and they're going to Youngstown, we can put them in a van, save a lot of fuel, you know, and do that. So those, that's why those are important. But right now, they literally are completely rusted out. The maintenance department, same thing. The truck is falling apart, and we need a new gator, those are those costs. And then athletics, and this is just bare minimum stuff, athletics, I mean, again, we can talk about all the things that need to be done there. The fieldhouse wrestling renovations, now we have two numbers. We got a number, before we ever engaged with Fanning Hallie, we had another architect, who wasn't John.
Metropolitan Architecture.
Yeah.
That's who we dealt with for the roof at Saterway and the rooftop units. They gave us a price of half a million dollars to do that, with like $50,000 to draw that up for. So it's about half of what.
And I think that honestly is more realistic number, is that half a million, knowing what needs to be done over there.
Yeah.
Okay? So that, what that would do is create a wrestling room where you have mats down all the time for wrestling, and have two locker rooms built into it. That's all we'd be doing, it's about four thousand square feet, and that's what would be there, okay? That would solve our issue with the wrestling.
For like five, five hundred thousand?
For half a million, not, not a million.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the tennis courts, we talked about before, they need to be fully replaced, and it's a, it's a million. This is the quote we have here, we, we haven't been able to get a good quote from anybody else. So we gotta go with this, they're saying it's one point one million.
Does that include the basketball courts?
Yes. Does it include the basketball courts?
It did, yeah.
Did he say, yeah, we asked him to, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it was included.
But I have no, I have no frame of reference for that number, I don't know. We had a three hundred thousand dollar quote a few years ago, six hundred thousand dollar quote, now one point one million.
And is the base of that just to the point where resurfacing doesn't do any good?
Yeah, that's the problem with it.
Because it wasn't that many years ago when we resurfaced.
We resurfaced it like five years ago, and to, I think that cost us thirty thousand for that, and then they wouldn't guarantee it. So, I mean, they did for like five months or something ridiculous.
And it's already fresh again?
It's really bad.
Yeah.
So what about for the tennis courts, something, I mean, it's open for people in the community to use. I mean, the parks, yeah, the parks have that continuing no end date that we passed a couple of years ago. Is that something that we can approach the city and the parks? I mean, you got people coming to use this, let's.
Play a partnership kind of thing?
Yeah.
I'll tell you what they'll want, I'm on the park's board.
Or break pickleball to it.
I'm on the park's board, and I'll say, wait, then we, there also will be pickleball courts. Our tennis coaches are adamantly opposed to having pickleball lines on the tennis courts because they said it confuses the players.
I understand.
And so they, there's a, the park's board asked me to talk to our coaches about putting pickleball, pickleball in there. I personally thought it was a good idea. The coaches do not think it's a good idea. They said that they have young players and they are very confused by the lines.
They're trying to teach somebody.
Yeah, so they, they do really do not want to do it. So I had to get back to the park's board and say, yeah, they don't, they don't want to do that.
How much more of that property we own, like, make the footprint larger, like, we're more, we're.
We could, yeah, more toward sixty, about sixty, you know?
There's room.
Yeah, there's, there's room in there. Now, if they want to pay, I think the park's board should pay for that, though, if they.
Agreed.
Yeah. Yeah, but they're actually looking, they give us, they give us, what is it, twenty-five thousand dollars a year?
Get a good opportunity there.
The park's board gives us about twenty-five thousand dollars a year because they use our facilities for the, for the bidding league program. They're actually looking at taking that, they want to take that money back because they want to hire a full-time director of the, of the rec program. And so they're, I don't know that they're gonna be able to, how much money they're gonna be able to free up to put in there. But I would say if we're gonna do that, and it's gonna be open to the community, then they should, they should help pay for it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then the parking lot, you know, we've got a couple of different numbers on this parking lot. One of them was three million dollars, and that was expanding it quite a bit, okay? Which I think we should do, but with that cost, we probably aren't going to. And then we had a two billion dollar cost, and now they're saying one point seven. So right around the two billion dollar frame for that, to do that parking lot by the stadium. And again, that doesn't do anything inside the stadium, because that, all that stuff needs to be dealt with as well. We need to do fencing, we need to do concrete, we need to tear out some of those buildings, we need to tear out those old lockers underneath the, of the old grandstands. There's a lot of things that need to be done there to, to give it a facelift. But that's, that's just the bare minimum things right now for athletics. So that gives you four point six million. So total of things that really have to be done in the next few years is about twelve million dollars. And that doesn't get us anything, any renovations, really, right? Nothing's, nothing's really getting spruced up by us doing these things. So that's, so you know what the budget is, you know where we are, and you know what, what has to be done, and that's twelve million dollars. So you can also listen to the architect, you know, talk about the numbers. And with, and if we did all the things that the architect put in the plan, it'd be almost eighty million dollars, right? You know, I don't think our community can afford to do that, right? So what I think we try to do, my suggestion, is that we, we, these things have to be done, there's twelve million dollars. If you look at this sheet here, the one that says VHS renovations on it. My thinking was that, I'm sorry, you can just clear it. We, we, instead of going to the full extent of full renovation, and, and I mean, this, I'm talking about both buildings we built here, VHS and SMS. We, okay, we upgrade the science labs, we upgrade the electrical, any electrical that needs to be upgraded. We don't tear off, sorry, which is part of the plan for the architects. We update this media center, remodel it. We replace, you know, basically remodel the auditorium. You know, I mean, physically it doesn't need to be remodeled, but all of the electrical and all the, the lighting, all that stuff needs to be, you know, and new curtains and all that. So we, we do all those things. We renovate the bathrooms, we put in LED lights everywhere, okay, to brighten the, brighten the place up. We paint everything, we do new interior doors, because all the doors look like nineteen sixty-eight. We need, we started the Voag program, and they need a shop. They need a shop where they can tear engines apart and, and where they can do wood projects, and they can do, you know, they can do projects. They need a shop about the half the size of this room would be ideal for them. So we try to figure out how to make that work somehow. We tear out the lockers, or we, you know, we replace them, I don't know, we'll have to figure out, you know, what does, what does the high school need? And what does the middle school need in terms of locker? Most kids don't use lockers anymore. If we're gonna start using lockers, then fine, we can replace them, but that's a discussion. So, and then we do the same, kinda the same thing at the middle school. You know, it's, it's basically giving a place a facelift and making it look better, you know, without spending eighty million dollars.
Would this accomplish, like, anywhere close to what you saw at, was it Port Clinton?
Yeah.
I didn't. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I didn't make that trip, but I mean, I know that.
This is what, kinda what they did to high school, Chris. This is what they did to your high school.
Yep.
Yep. And even our architects, like, we wanted them to go further, but they, they didn't feel like they could. And so they just painted everything, they updated the auditorium, you know, they just made the place look like it got a, you know, a remodel. A remodel.
I'll tell you, I, I, I can't believe that on the have-to-have list, that the bathrooms aren't on there.
I agree.
I think the bathrooms in this building are atrocious.
They, SMS is worse.
SMS is awful.
SMS is awful.
Yeah, no, I agree, but those are the kind of things, like, you know, we don't have to do them, and we can still have school. These are things, like, we absolutely have to do them, you know?
What is the, what's wrong with the, I mean, just out of curiosity, auditorium, house and stage lights?
They're completely worn out. We've had people in to fix them, and they fix them, and fix them, and fix them, and now they're saying they can't be fixed anymore.
That's what it comes down to, is that, like, during the last renovation, they went into the old fixtures that are the house lights, and they put LED screw-in bulbs, that was the, the fix to that. You can't dim them, you can't bring them up or down, it's just on or off. And then the actual stage lights that they have, the robotic lights are twenty-some years old. I think two thousand and three is when they were put in, and it's just getting to the point for them to repair them. We can buy that, like, those were like twenty-six thousand dollars apiece, you can buy new ones for five now. So for us to repair those and keep replacing the circuit boards and stuff, it just doesn't make a lot of sense when we can replace them with five thousand dollars.
I got, I mean, I know we still use the auditorium, so I didn't, I mean, we're getting by somehow, I didn't.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, you know, they, you, so you go to the musical this weekend, you don't notice that stuff because they work around it. But we met with them, and they are desperate to get this stuff fixed.
The sound was cutting in and out sometimes, too.
Yeah, that's a microphone issue, but they had, they have to work a little bit of magic behind the scenes to make all the lighting stuff work because it's, yeah, it's just ancient.
Are there any grants that you can reach out to with the, your community or something like that?
That may, you know, a lot.
Like a sponsorship on some of these things?
Yeah, a lot of people don't want to give grant money for facilities. They, they, there's certain things they're trying to accomplish, and it usually doesn't, they want, they expect you to take care of your facilities. Yeah.
Yeah, Vincent Leini, when we talked to them about this, did not bring up any grants. Most of the contractors that we talked to, if there's grants available, they'll do the legwork to, to make that happen for us. So I'm assuming there isn't much of a grant for that auditorium.
Is there any incentives for upgrading the LED? I know that, like, at a smaller level, if you upgrade LED at your home or something like that, you get a kickback from the lecture company or some.
We'd have to look, I would venture to say no, but we'd have to look into that and see.
We did that a few years ago at Lake Valley, and they're just like, you're gonna save money on your.
Yeah. Congratulations.
It was very noticeable, actually. We did that with lots of buildings, and it was noticeable, I mean, like, you know.
I feel like a few years back, when I was still at Ford, we went through a huge LED upgrade, and there was a credit from the state. There was something.
Was House Bill two sixty-four?
Yes.
Yeah. And in what they.
Well, we had it here.
Yeah, we used it.
We did. We finished paying that off. We, we just paid that debt off in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, is when that was finally completed. The way they used the word that, though, is, here's how much we'll loan you because based on your energy costs, this is how much you'll save. Over twenty years or fifteen years, you'll end up freecouping and breaking a C-bond.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So not free money.
So then the last sheet is this one, the black header, and we highlighted it yellow. And I'll let Justin talk to you about that.
Right, so this is incredibly preliminary. This has a lot of caveats with it, too. This is assuming a thirty-year, and this is assuming five percent interest. And it's also assuming your current assessed value as well. I mean, I have that number, but, but what we're essentially looking at is twenty million debt service, take out those bonds. I'll probably do cop's grant, similar to what we have with the ES. There's your interest of five percent, it's almost equal to the principal. And then you break that out over a thirty-year, there's your annual debt service of one point three million. With our current assessed value of five hundred and forty-five million dollars, you kind of back into what that would equal for a millage amount. And then from that millage amount, you can also get a pretty good estimate of what it's gonna cost per one hundred thousand dollar home value. So twenty million dollars would be a two point four seven mil bond, and it would cost the average home owner of a hundred thousand dollar home, it would cost seventy-six dollars and seventy-two cents per year. It's a lot of assumptions, just, you know, we can get these things way more accurate and way closer once we, we have a, a target that we're shooting for. But I just wanted to throw some numbers out there for you, just to understand what we're working with and what our, what our assessed value ultimately brings in for money and stuff.
So that's for a bond, if we go out for a bond levy? How, what's the time limit on those? Do you go for, is it a five-year, ten-year, or do you have to go for a thirteen?
You don't have to go, you can go twenty, thirty, you can go up to forty, depending on the specific type of, of bond issue.
So when we put that to the voter, is that gonna be?
Yeah, we would, we would hash all that out before, we'd have bond counsel walk us through this stuff as well, to make sure that what we're doing does qualify for a thirty-year or a twenty-year, you know, you have the, you have the right makeup. This is just a quick, put something together just to show you what that means.
Yeah, we wanted you to see that, you know, what kind of millage we'd have to ask for to, if we were gonna do a bond.
And we would do, I don't know, this is gonna be stupid, but the difference between a bond and a improvement levy, we would do.
So bond, the bond gives you, go ahead, you tell them, I mean, it gives you all the money upfront, right? And the improvement is an annual, that's money coming at you.
Yeah, yeah, okay, got it. So you couldn't do any?
But the PI levy is constant money, but the problem is, it does, it only generates a certain amount, and it doesn't get these kind of things done.
And it doesn't give you the money upfront.
So we want to go.
Okay, so we would need to go over this type to accomplish what we don't have.
Yeah, the, the PI is, is really for maintaining what you have.
Okay.
And since we don't have that now, you know, that is something also to look at down the future, but I mean,
Yeah.
you'll need something to maintain this stuff.
Do schools have law? Okay.
But one thing we could do possibly is roll, so that bond that we have for the elementary, roll it into this, and that knows away, that frees up a million dollars a year in the budget.
So refinance it, basically?
Yeah, refinance that twelve point seven five, roll it into what we currently would be going for a bond. Yeah, there's a lot of different scenarios we can run, it's just a matter of how advantageous that is. And also with where we locked in those rates and everything else.
The interest rate's probably a lot worse now than.
Well, that's the good news about the bond market, doesn't, it doesn't, it's not nearly as volatile as that. So like, when we did that, we were at three, four, or five percent for a lot of them. This is assuming five percent right now. I think four point seven five might be the current rate, so they.
They're not tied to the Fed funds rate like the banks are, so the Fed funds rate is how, when the banks loan, borrow money from the Fed, then that's the interest rate they pay, the bond market's not tied to that.
That's helpful.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a, you know, you got it at a two percent, now you're refinancing it at eight percent. It's not, you can talk about one, one and a half percent.
So we currently have, no, we don't have a bond for the ES, we have?
We have general fund.
Well, it was a loan, it was a loan taken out that we had to re, we repaid at a total of a million dollars a year.
But we didn't go to the voters for that.
Okay, so you're saying we could take that money completely out of, so the people aren't paying for that right now?
They are through the general fund.
Through the general fund, okay.
That would be rolled into what we borrowed here.
Okay.
Think about, like, refinancing your house.
Yeah.
And you take out money to buy an RV, and it rolls into your mortgage, that's what, this is the same thing.
The easy answer, too, on that is, at the time, it made sense because that elementary school was something we needed, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But now, that million dollars a year or whatever is what's preventing us from getting a lot of this other stuff done on a regular basis, right? We're, we're saddled with that, so we don't have the ability to go out and fix everything we want to fix and update the things we want to update.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have one point one million every year going toward pay down that bond with principal and interest.
Okay.
And so if we were able to roll that into a, a newer bond, we would eliminate one point one million from our general fund. And it would improve our cash balance by one, you know, there's five million dollars, by one point five million dollars.
As everything, so, you know, it does free up that money, but we are running a one point five million dollar, I should have said. So that money kind of gets swept up there, you know? So that, that has to be dealt with, too. Eventually, we'll just have to say, okay, something's gotta change here in terms of spending, right? Eighty percent of that money goes to staffing, that's where the money is. So we get to a point where we have to say, okay, we can't continue to have a budget deficit, what are we gonna do about it?
What is the time limit for making, like, this, like, getting this out?
That, that was exactly, no, that was exactly the right question.
I'll transition us, there we go.
So if we were gonna do, what we'll have to decide eventually is, okay, how much money are we gonna borrow? All right, what are we gonna try and do, what are we gonna try to accomplish? We don't have to do that until next May, because we don't, we don't want to put this on the ballot during the presidential election year, which is coming up, especially this one. So we wouldn't look at doing this until May, next year.
It would be on the ballot in May?
Yeah.
Okay.
At the earliest.
Yeah. So we would have to have this submitted by, you know, before the election?
Well, it'll be the time of day, it'll be beforehand, so I'm not sure the exact dates, but sometime in February.
We get all our induction in a row, we said we're gonna go pay, we'll get all, everything lined up for that.
Okay.
So we just, this is, now we just think about, okay, what do we want to do here, what are we gonna try to accomplish, you know?
Do we have a? I know this was probably on all of this stuff, but I don't know if you guys looked at it, like, these renovations here that we just want, do we have a price just for these?
No, so this would just need brainstorming, saying, okay, if we're not gonna, we can't do everything, but we gotta do something. Let's just do the essential stuff. Now, this list can be added to, you know, you guys, you know, Chris is like, well, what are we gonna do about this?
Yeah.
I mean, that kind of thing, you know, as we go along here, at some point, we would say, okay, these are the things we're gonna do. And then we'd bring Fanning Howley back and say, okay, what's the cost of doing this?
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Because I think to this list, the sound system in the gym should be this.
Yeah, we could throw that in there.
Please.
And that really is not that expensive, honestly.
I, I wouldn't think it would be horrible, but it is really bad.
I know, I agree with you.
I guess it's a trick.
I think that list could and should be even bigger, though, even things like, you know, furniture in the classrooms, things.
Well, that's another, yeah, absolutely, yes, that, that should have been on there, furniture.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, for sure. And that's not cheap.
No.
No, but I think if you wanna, if you wanna make a difference, right, you're doing it for the people who use this building.
Yeah.
So if you want to make a difference, then give them something that they're gonna embrace and appreciate, right?
Well, yeah.
And to me, like, I don't know why, but I've always felt like restrooms make a first impression on people everywhere you go.
You talk about.
Go to a restaurant, you go to a whatever, and, and the restroom tells the story.
It's how you gauge the cleanliness of the, of the facility.
Yeah.
You go into a restaurant, and the bathroom is dirty, you don't really want to eat there.
Yeah.
Restrooms, the furniture they use, the cafeteria facility, you know, the, everything that they use frequently on a common basis and make people walk in and have a little bit of a, I mean, like, the roof and the HVACs are must-haves, but at the end of the day, nobody's gonna be like, wow, you know what I mean? Like, oh, you want people to walk in and, and see, wow, you really did something here, you know?
I do think, too, walking through Port Clinton, I was blown away by it, and they said it was, I mean, it's similar to this list, but I was like, do kids have to be so proud to walk through Port Clinton? And when you get some pride from your students, there's less vandalism, there is less, you know, ripping things off walls and bathrooms because they're proud of it.
That's the point I was gonna, just, you're gonna make, Sarah. So we build a new high school in the valley. They were in this tiny little building that was supposed to be a middle school and a high school, completely overgrown. They had, how many, how many portables?
Were eleven.
Eleven portable buildings out back, because they didn't have enough room for everybody. Holes in the floor, skunks living underneath of the portables. I mean, the stories are unbelievable.
Yeah.
Build a new high school, and everyone's like, now that the kids are not gonna take care of this, they're not gonna respect it. It's the exact opposite. We never had vandalism. I mean, I was there for twenty years. We did not, they loved that place, so, so proud of it. We did not, they loved that place, so, so proud of it. We didn't, we didn't have any issues like that at all, even when it was happening around the state, you know, and you had these TikTok things where people were vandalizing things. We didn't have those problems, they, they loved that building, you know? And it is, it's incredible, and in the community too. So then we built an elementary, we had four one hundred year old elementary buildings, and people just loved them, their grandparents went there, great grandparents, they went to school there. It's good enough for their kid, we don't need a new building, we own a new building, and they're all like, this was the right thing to do. You know, and even people came to the board meeting screaming and yelling, we shouldn't be doing it, and afterwards said, you were right, this is, this is awesome, this is the way it should be.
Well, the kids need it, I mean, they're here.
Definitely want to give them something though that they appreciate for, that matters to them.
Yeah, they're here for hours every day, they should be proud of where they're at.
Yeah, absolutely.
And something the kids, you know, parents who aren't construction, whatever, you know what I mean, that aren't going to look at that stuff, they want them to walk in and.
It affects the staff too.
I'm not going to, I don't think about it.
The attitude of the staff, and even the, the classified folks that do the cleaning, when you have a new facility, they want it to look good too. And so they work harder at making it, you know, look good.
Yeah, absolutely, worship, pride.
Have we done a survey with the administrators and the staff currently to see what their, like, top items are?
No, no, we would do that, this, this was just me brainstorming if we could just do a little bit more than, you know, the minimum. We would, this, we would have stakeholder groups involved in, in all this, letting them know, these are the parameters, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to do the full renovation. But what can we do to make this place, right, and these buildings look better? And we would have our architect involved in that, and so there would be a whole process that would, would get us to what we would do.
If we didn't have somebody in the board meeting complaining that this isn't necessary or something, we could do like a, a walkthrough. Like, okay, let's go look at the science department, and then kind of show them what, well, this is what other places have. This is what we're going for, maybe.
It's actually, I was talking with my wife, and that's one of the things she suggested, and she said, you guys should do walkthroughs of the facilities and just show them.
Where we're at?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, a lot of it.
At first glance, it's a beautiful school.
Well, for sure.
Like, all the door frames are, you know, you know, it's just all those little things, all those window frames, I mean, just sitting in here.
You won't know how bad it is until they're fixed.
Remember, do you remember what Port Clinton's media center looked like?
Yes.
Compared to this?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it was like space age compared to this.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, really, really.
Big, big windows, and like little pod seating areas, and comfortable seating areas, and less books and more computers, and.
And that's all facelift stuff?
Yeah, facelift, that, that was an old high school that was built in nineteen sixty-five.
Well, and that's something too, you know, that's not on these lists, but our buildings need exterior facelifts as well.
They do, yes, Chris, I agree with that.
So, I mean, the walk up, the entryway, it needs to be something that catches your eye, something that, you know, it's just, it's so, it shows its age now, whether it's this building or Sailor Way.
Yeah, I want to do something at the main entrances, you know how they have these big giant metal headers? I don't know what they're for or why they're there, but those should, that should say Vermillion High School. You know?
Yeah.
And, and I want to do that on each of those entrances, same thing over at the middle school, you know, there's, and that stuff doesn't really cost that much money. You know, in the grand scheme of things, you know?
Yeah, the, um, this sheet on the very, very back, I can put together, this is, I know. No, what, what I wanted to show you was, was, and again, this isn't what, this isn't what the schools generate, this is just what they've spent, okay? And, and this is every single school district in Erie and Lorain County. And this is the amount of money that they are spending over the last five years to take care of all this stuff. Everything that you just mentioned, you know, whether it's outside, the inside, the bathrooms, the, the media center. This is the money that all of these other school districts are, are spending to, to keep up and to, to have those types of things.
Yeah.
Look at Little Margarita, almost two million dollars. This is the money that's outside of the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when you, when you go to the Leary or Sandusky, when you go to Sandusky schools, they got an extra seventy-four million dollars, you know, to, to take care of that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, is that because of their bond?
Yeah, they, they either passed a bond, or they, they have all, what you can see, the bond is right there, they got the P I money right there.
Yeah.
And then North Ridg hill, I believe, just passed a very substantial bond levy this last November. It's not included in there.
It is, yeah.
I don't have those numbers yet, but that's not included.
I mean, even look at Firelands, Fireland's like the fifth one down. P I fund, three point two million dollars, bond, fifteen million dollars, spent forty-eight million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah?
So we, like, before we would decide how much of a bond we want to go for, that's when we would get a final list on like this, right? Renovations, all of that stuff, and then we would come up with a total price.
Yeah, so we would reengage with the architect and say, okay, we, we can't do the dream that you outlined here.
Yeah, eighty million dollars.
Right, so, but we still want to give these places a facelift to modernize them to the extent that we can afford. So if we, if we come up with a list of things that we really want, they have to be done, right? Then we would have to put a cost to that.
Okay.
For each building.
And that would help us identify how much of a bond we need to go for.
That's right, that's right, and it would have to also include that list of things that have to get done too.
Yeah, which is already twelve million.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Justin, on this, the, where it says building fund or maintenance fund, where are those monies coming from?
So what happens is, some of these school districts participated in Ohio Facility School Council. And so when you participate with a state like that, they require you to set up those two funds. One to maintain it, one's for classrooms and stuff, so it's still from a bond.
Yeah, you have to pass a little bond.
Okay.
To maintain the new buildings that you built.
Yeah, it's still a bond, it's just how, how the school itself has to actually account for it, depending on whether or not you're using state aid or not.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, maybe it's not as really P I, but just a different one.
It's actually smart that they did that, we built an elementary, and you have to do the half a deal, and you can either go to your voters for it, or you have to pay for it yourself. For us, it was like ninety thousand dollars a year, so we didn't go to the voters, but we also didn't have a P I levy. But we, so we didn't go to the voters, but it forces you, you build a new building, you need to take care of it, and that's kind of like the state is saying to you. You need to have the funds to take care of it, and if you don't have them in the house, then you got to go to the voters and get them.
Makes sense.
So these that have, in both columns here, have a bond levy and a P I levy?
Right, so, yeah, so if any money was spent out of any one of those two, they, they had, so like, if you were to go down on the bond right there, Mid U does not have a bond. Edison, Perkins, and Margarita ourselves, and if you were to look at the P I fund, Lorain doesn't have a P I, but they do have a maintenance fund. And then we're the only one that doesn't have a P I.
So we have the safety and security levy, the emergency just renewal levy.
That's operating money, yeah.
Yeah, and then we would go for essentially the bond now, and at some point essentially then.
Uh, uh, I think I.
Would need if you had to maintain.
We'd want some spacing between those, you know?
The safety and security levy, that's all we already are taking care of that, we can't really glean from, there isn't something on here that is.
Well, we, we did cameras.
You do it where you can.
Yeah, there's, it's restricted money, so you can always spend it for certain things, but like, we put in all new cameras in the buildings, security cameras. It pays for part of, it pays for a lot of salaries, so it pays the S R O salary, helps offset the salary for the health, the mental health therapists, the guidance counselors, that type of thing.
So that's money you're not pulling from the general fund?
About three hundred thousand dollars a year, yeah.
And then just renewed.
I think that's best.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right, so we're good on that for five, that's five years?
They think past six.
If we ask for a bond, and then we ask for a P I levy, does the emergency levy go away, or do we keep renewing?
No, you have to renew it. It's, it's needed for operating.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Once we, once we pass the bond, though, that's there for its lifetime.
Well, it tells paid off.
Yeah.
Tells paid off.
So whatever we go for, thirty years, it's there for thirty years, we're not putting that back on the ballot, that's not.
And what will happen over time is, you know, if you get the interest rates, you refinance it, right, to bring down the, the rate.
But we don't have to go back to the people for it, if they approve it, it's there for that long, so the only things we.
It's like getting a mortgage.
Okay. So we, every five years for the safety and security levy?
Every five years if they were starting, and then everything else is just renewed automatically.
Okay. So like, every year, we have something out there. Here we are for this one now.
And that's how most schools just live, they're like that, you know, you don't want to be that way.
Yeah.
But, you know, in the situation we're in, where we can't get any O S F C money for our facilities because we look wealthy.
Yeah.
You know, we're in a bind where we look great on paper, but we don't have the money, and forty percent of our kids are free on these lines. And we can't afford to take care of, I mean, we're spending all our night paying for people and their health insurance and their retirement.
Yeah.
There's nothing we can do about that?
No.
And times have changed, you know, finance, we have these changes, we've done good for a long time, I feel like, and, you know, facilities, yes, right? You have to, yeah.
And this is, I would say that this campus is this community's greatest investment.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Take the bonds too, the people in your mouth would have to.
Yeah, yeah, they said, yeah, the facilities are, are solid, you know, rock solid. They're just saying is, you know, if you were doing an O F S C project, the, the renovation costs exceed what it would cost to build new, or it's close to exceeding. So they would say tear it down, even though it's a rock solid building, you know, because you're spending so much to renovate it. But we don't have to do that because we're not going to get that money.
Yeah, I want to say our last, I'm going to have it in here, but it would have been nineteen ninety-three was the last time we went for a current expense levy to pass that. And then we went from nineteen ninety-three until two thousand eleven when we passed the emergency levy. And then the next levy that we passed after that was really community driven for the safety and security levy, and that's not operating money, that's, that's, that's a specific.
So really two thousand eleven.
So there's been no new money operating wise since two thousand eleven?
Since two thousand eleven.
That's impressive, that's good.
So from ninety-three, two thousand eleven.
And working with Fanning Howie, once we put all this together, they also have a division that helps you, you know, help the, the community understand this. And helps you pass your, your levy, they, they work with you, they, they do this all over the state, and even outside of the state of Ohio, so they know what you're doing. They would give us a lot of really great advice about how to approach this with the community.
Educate them.
Yes, educate them, and that's what we're going to have to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Howie, you just have to think about it.
Is there something to vote on, Ed, I mean, like, we say, yes, let's go for it, and then we go from there, is that?
Yeah, we have to draft a resolution, and, and similar to when we, yeah, there's two different things we have to do.
Okay, yeah.
But that's, that's a little further down the line, but the first thing is just figuring out what and how.
Because we would do that once we determine the amount, okay?
So, so now, if you all agree, I can go back to Rod at Fanning Howie and say, okay, we're definitely not the one, the, the dream thing here. We're going to, we're going to do something else, and we'll talk to him about this, and then have him start to put that together, like, okay, what does this look like? And then he'll, he'll have good ideas too, and we'll get ideas from everybody about what should be on this, on this list.
They kind of expect that, right, you're not going to do the whole.
Well, they, yeah, I mean.
I certainly would love it, but I would think we would be kind of like.
Yeah, they, they have to, I mean, it doesn't matter whether they understand or not, you know, we can only afford what we can afford, you know? And we can't ask our community for eighty million dollars, you know? And, and, and so, yeah, he'll have to understand, and he will, he will. I mean, that's what they got into over at Port Clinton, they wanted them to rebuild that high school, build a new high school, and they said, no, we're not, we're not doing it.
I read in the paper, I think Kiran's looking at the same stuff right now, right?
Correct.
They're all looking at estimates on everything.
They just had the bond council come to their last meeting, I believe, and talk about all this stuff here, what it would cost them.
There was a big article in the Sandusky paper on that.
Yeah.
Well, using your figures, if we were to ask them for eight million dollars, it would be an additional like three hundred dollars per family additionally.
For a hundred thousand or?
Yeah, and here's the thing, the average home in Vermillion is over two hundred thousand, so that's actually double that, yeah, the average, the average.
Oh, yeah, I imagine nobody would really go with that.
Well, all of the estimates that the architect gave were to O F C C standards, right? So there's an opportunity for us to do better, I think, because we're not necessarily.
Right now, they just sold.
While you take all the.
What they, what they were cut out is anything that's aesthetic, really. They, they build cracker boxes, they're very plain game, and unless you can put up some of your own money to, to offset that, you just get what they, what they want to give you.
Yeah, makes sense.
That's crazy.
But I think, you know, yeah, maybe we're not looking at the whole eight million dollar pipe dream, but I don't, I don't. I mean, I think we have to look somewhere in this twenty to forty million dollar range, and, because you're only going to get like one kick at this, right?
Well, for sure, yeah.
And I think, I think we can get really nice boos out of this.
I think so too.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's in the sense.
Yeah, we're at that point.
But I agree, Chris, like you said, it's not like we can go low, and then five years from now, see what else we can do.
Well, you know, like, a couple of years from now, you don't want to be like, oh, we should have done this.
Well, for sure, yeah.
Glad you're saying that, because that's exactly what we were saying today, is, is you can't go low because you can't go back.
Yeah, yeah. And so I was trying to understand it also, I'm like, okay, so it's like a, you got one shot for thirty years.
And we, it may not pass the first time, guys, it may not pass the first two or three times. You've just got to keep going and keep convincing and get, get more votes each time. And I believe, I believe that there's a core group of people in this community that will want to make it happen and help make it happen. And we got to get those folks on our team, help, that, that district advisory council has got a lot of those people on it. They, and, and help them understand all of this, that you guys understand, and they will get out there and help us do it. They were ready after the first meeting, we'll just go remember. So they'll, there's a core group of people that really will help us.
Agreed. And it is disappointing that we have issues to the extent that we do with the elementary school.
Yes, 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 and the biggest one being that it's too small.
I know, yeah, well, yeah.
That, that was a topic of discussion when we built the, the building, and I feel like it just settled in that, you know what? This is where we are, this is what our, and we had, you know, the, the figures that told us we had declining enrollment. If you looked at the chart back then, from twelfth grade down to kindergarten, it literally was like this, it was declining enrollment at every grade.
I believe that.
And, and we were just to the point where we felt like, okay, it's going to be, this will be adequate, it'll cover us. And, you know, maybe in hindsight, maybe it should have been a little bigger or whatever, but just the, the, the issues though in general, and I know. I don't know, it's not worth rehashing, but the, the contractor, John, you probably remember, the contractor.
Well, a lot of, a lot of it stems from the architects.
Yeah.
That, a lot of this was baked into the, the drawings and the plans, the fact that there is no gravel under the concrete, respect by the architect. So really, those are the people I wanted to go back on, because they're the ones that lay out the plan, and the contractors just do what they're told to do.
Don't you think as a contractor, and you were watching it, and you're like, there should be gravel under there?
Well, apparently.
The project manager that we had watching over everything, yeah, should have caught that.
Well, the art, first of all, no architect should have ever specked a sidewalk or any walkway without gravel or anything, that should not have happened. And apparently, I guess it was Hermes, is it Hermes Parker that did the concrete work up at the athletic facility?
It was different than.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe it was the same thing up there, it was specked without gravel, and they said, we will not pour concrete without gravel. And they forced them to put the gravel down.
Yeah.
Yeah, Hermes Parker people told me that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and R F C, when they did the elementary building, also brought that up, that there was no stone under that concrete. And the architect at the time in that meeting said, do it as we specked it, and that's what was said, so.
And that's why we're not working with that architect.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah, but it is what it is.
It is now, yeah, we go forward, and we, we do what we can do, the best we can do.
What are, John, what are the issues with the playgrounds, where it says, like, regrading and drainage?
It's the drainage, so all the drainage that they put in, the manholes and the, it's all lower than the grade that we have. So it'll slope, but all of the mulch that's there, it just keeps washing into it, it washes beyond it, it's just too low for what they have there.
Well, it just doesn't, like, so you can't put a drain in, and then put mulch all over, over the places that's being drained. There's, there's a drain on the north side of the playground, you can't even find it, it is so full of mulch that you cannot figure out where it is.
Yeah.
So they build a, a, a drainage system and then put mulch, so the mulch would run into the drainage system. What should have happened is, there should have been underground drains put in there that ran the water off of the playground somewhere else in another low area over there. And not, you can't put a, a, a manhole there that, and let it fill. somewhere else into another low area over there and not, you can't put a, a, a manhole there that, and let it fill up with mulch.
Yeah.
And then the mulch also washes off of, because that, that manhole's full of mulch. The water then pushes all the mulch onto the sidewalk. So anytime you walk in the back door of the elementary, you're walking on mulch on top of concrete.
Yeah, we went in and put risers all along that sidewalk to try to keep that mulch from coming and it still comes up over top of it. When, when we get a good rain, yeah, it pushes it right up over top of it. The shame is, we've got the reservoir right next to it.
And the water doesn't run there? No, but they could have put underground drainage in and dumped it right into that reservoir.
That's the whole purpose of the retention.
Yeah, the retention bond, yep. And they, doesn't go there.
That, that, so that needs to be fixed, you know?
Yeah, and we do have to go out regularly and uncover those drainage, uh, manholes because they get covered over and you have no idea where they're at. So then we got to go out and look for them off the print and find them and uncover them for, again.
Well, sure, yeah, yeah. Is that the both playgrounds?
Uh, it's just the one by Sailor Way. The other one has some issues, but not the same. Uh, in fact, they, the issues there were addressed by taking the mulch out and, uh, it's, or leaving the mulch, but we took the grass out that was humped up higher and added mulch over there. Uh, that does have a drain that's covered and Angie has to go out every once in a while and find it and uncover it. Uh, but the one that's really bad is the one by Sailor Way Drive.
Gotcha. So we would just regrade that, put underground drainage in there and run the water off where it should go and it would solve that problem.
And even-
Yeah.
Well, that's really, that's a half a million dollar estimate?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, we put drainage down in the entire baseball outfield for two hundred thousand.
Yeah, well, part of that, uh, estimate too was changing it from mulch to like the poured in rubber, uh, asphalt that's there around and then putting grass in different areas and mulch so that it wasn't all mulch there washing away. So part of that is part of that. The drainage, it's basically redoing that whole playground.
Regrading and slowing it.
And grading it, yeah. So it would be doing away with the mulch for the most part. It would just be a poured in, like we had at South Street School for a while there. The soft poured in stuff, so.
Yeah, that's kind of expensive.
It is, and that will raise the price dramatically, but, so like we have to go right now and we have to dig some of it out because another thing the health department says is it's not, uh, deep enough or thick enough, which it is. But after a while, that mulch turns to mud and rots, so then when we got to overturn it, then we'll end up digging some out and putting more in, but.
Yeah, it, it gets inspected. The, the playground gets inspected. The, the mulch has to be a certain depth or if a kid falls and they figure they're going to get hurt, so. Okay, so I will now, we'll, we will work with the architect and get him back in here and let him know what the plan is and have him put some new numbers together and then we'll outline a process for getting everybody involved in making decisions.
Sounds good.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you for all the information.
Picked up with all of Justin's numbers.
Well, hey, I got one more thing. I thought about this a little while ago. It's not on the list, but I'll keep bringing it up because it's something that drives me insane. I still think we should consider getting rid of, like now, every graffitied rock on this campus except for, except for maybe the big one at the stadium.
There is you.
Every, I mean, like literally, the kids have not missed a rock. They've got every rock from, from Sanford to Sailor Way is painted.
And you want it four inch in diameter or bigger?
And it makes, it makes the campus look bad.
I agree.
I agree with you.
I think I just saw on my Facebook, somebody put a picture.
Like, if there's, I mean, pick them up, get rid of them. I don't know, where do you get rid of rocks? I don't know, but.
People will take them.
Les, Les just said this at the principal's meeting last week. He said, I always, he said, I want to get a front end loader and I want to load every rock on this campus and dump it in the lake.
Yeah. Yeah. They, they, they just, it's a bad look.
Yeah, it is. I agree with you. Well, when we get this stuff done, we'll put a pin to it. I've already sent out an email after you, because you contacted me about this. I sent an email to, to Jen and I said, Jen, the rock painting's got to stop. You can paint the one rock by the stadium. I said, they painted every rock, now they're starting to paint the, the standards for the light poles, put the concrete on those. I said, they're out of control. And what happened was, somebody got it started and it was being supervised, then they quit supervising it.
Yeah.
So you, now you got kids running around with spray paint cans, right?
Essentially graffiti.
Yeah, and I said, now on, if there's going to be any spray painting, it's going to be supervised. So whoever is, is supervising this needs to be with them when it happens and it's only that rock by the stadium.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to her too. We just replaced garbage receptacles all around the high school.
I saw that, they were good.
And I'm terrified they're going to spray that one down there because they did it so many times.
Yeah, the one by the gym?
Yeah, yeah, and so I talked to her about-
We got a video camera down there?
We do have a camera down there, so we can see that now.
Oh, yeah, so if you get to the corner.
But I agree with you. That absolutely will happen.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can pick them up and get rid of them anytime.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I was glad that, uh, at the beginning of the year, you guys took out the, the wooden posts with the ropes.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure when they first went in years and years ago, they looked great, but they started to look bad over the years too.
Yeah, the rope only lasted about five years and then the kids started sitting on it and it would just snap and break and then you'd have pieces. They'd try wrapping it. It was time to go.
Did that stop sign that had been painted coming down from the fieldhouse ever get replaced, cleaned?
Yeah, so they replaced, Bill went through and replaced all the signs that were graffitied or bad, rusted and replaced every one of them through the district, so.
That was right, right after that happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
But yeah, it's not a good idea to get teenagers spray painting hands.
No.
Really not. I mean, you see the trains that come through town, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great place for people.
It would be different if it was the exact town.
Great point.
You know, they'll have a train stop.
I am, I'm always impressed with that. I truly am, I'm like-
True.
Yeah, true.
And, and how, how do they have time to do it?
I have no idea. They're, they've got to be in the train yard.
Yeah, that three point five percent is not employed.
Yeah. And they could be with that talent.
Yes, absolutely.
Clearly, they're missing something.
That's a great point.
And I'll tell you too, I know there was an email going around about it, but it is good, at least a couple of weeks ago when the weather was good. Good to see baseball and softball able to get on their fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for-
Yeah, Jeff Pax come around, he's very happy with it. Uh, Bill's done a good job. He covered up the fields this year, the infield's, uh, everything, so. Lips were down, everything's good, so.
That's good.
And then the work that was done.
Yeah, but hey, putting, having, putting Bill in the supervising role. Bill knew what to do. He knew what needed to get done, but he couldn't make others do it. Now he can, he's getting done. And he's, he's got the plan. He, they get the plan every day. They execute the plan, he supervises it, he checks on it, and now all that wasn't happening. And so I think the campus looks as good as it's looked and turn, and especially even last fall with all the mulling was happening consistently, you know?
Yeah, and they'll be spraying the dandelions. I know for years it was, well, we want it to be natural and then someone would say we want the dandelion sprayed, but he's doing all that. He's fertilizing all the property now too, so.
Awesome.
Everything, so we don't have the clover issues that we were having.
Yeah, and that kind of stuff makes a big difference too, right? You drive through and you see it and you're, I mean, it'll catch your eye one way or the other, good or bad.
Yeah, that's right.[1745.62]